So. We have a quorum. And which they appointed out, this is special finance committee meeting. May I welcome members for attending today's meeting? May I also welcome the government officials for attending the meeting? The first session is on the civil service. The portfolio or under the Secretary for Civil Service, the time is three fifteen to, uh, twelve fifteen, uh, back one, two fifteen to three fifteen. As you show, um, we will give you a break. Um, at some time. Um, and I will, um, keep the time. And if there is not enough time to give answers or ask questions. Um, or rather, if we have extra, uh, we, we have not make full use of the time, members can have a second round. Uh, first of all, um, the Policy Secretary. We want to give more, please, please be brief and concise. Uh, we want to leave more time to members to ask questions. The Secretary for Civil Service, thank you Chairman. Uh, Chairman Members, in the Civil Service expenses in twenty fourteen fifteen, uh, we want to highlight two points. First, uh, Civil Service establishment. The Civil Service has supported the, uh, fourth term, the government implementing many new policies initiatives in professional effective manner. Um, we will, uh, continue to work, uh, with the bureaus and departments and we, if need be, we will increase our strength in the management. Um, if we, uh, cannot do it internally, issue redeployment or streamlining or re-engineering, uh, we will support, um, the, um, additional, uh, establishment. Uh, there is a slight increase of, uh, Civil Service by one percent from two thousand, since two thousand eight seven in twenty fourteen fifteen. Draft estimate expenditure protect an additional two thousand fifty six posts. And, uh, Civil Service establishment are increased one point five percent over the previous year. This is the highest year or new increase since two thousand seven eight. Subject to the approval of the, uh, draft estimate, uh, twenty fourteen fifteen, by this Council's Civil Service establishment is estimated to stand at one hundred seventy three thousand nine hundred sixty one posts at the end of March twenty fifteen. By twenty, uh, in twenty fourteen fifteen, most departments will have their establishment increased. Uh, growth will be particularly significant in some departments, including the Buildings Department, House Department, Customs, Exchange Department, Immigration Department. Second day. In the twenty fourteen fifteen draft estimates, and there are some financial provisions under various heads of expenditure which are directly related to policy area of central management of Civil Service. A had, uh, uh, a, a financial provision of one thousand and eighty eight point seven million is proposed for providing medical and dental services for serving Civil Service pensioners and eligible dependents at young family clinics and dental clinics, as well as for their reimbursement, medical fees and hospital charges. For the former, an allocation of six hundred eighty eight point seven million dollars is proposed, representing an increase of sixty four point six million dollars or ten point four percent over the previous revised estimate. And the additional provision is mainly for setting up additional general and specialized dental surgeries, kicking, kickstarting the perpetuary work on a new families clinic and in procuring additional equipment. With regard to reimbursement, the medical fees and hospital charges and allocation, four hundred million dollars is proposed, representing an increase of forty million dollars or over eleven percent over the twenty thirteen fourteen revised estimate. And the additional provisions to meet an addition, anticipate the increase in application for reimbursement of medical expenses from eligible persons. The second one is an amount of, is had one hundred and twenty pensions. Uh, Program One, Public and Judicial Service Pension Benefits, an amount of twenty six thousand three hundred thirty one point seven million dollars is proposed pension payments to eligible retired public officers. This represents an increase of three thousand three hundred fifty one point five million dollars or one fourteen point six percent over the previous year's revised estimate. The increase is due to an estimated increase in number of new retirees in twenty fourteen fifteen and the four-year effect of pension payments those retiring in twenty thirteen fourteen. Well, I stop here, Mr. Chairman. I am, my colleagues are happy to answer your questions. Thank you. Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Tang. Let me remind members that, um, depending on numbers, um, number of members asking speak, uh, asking to speak, we will allocate the time to members. Initially, we'll give four minutes to each member's questions and answers together. And when you ask questions, please make reference to, uh, the serial reply serial number. Say, for example, CSP zero zero one, uh, to facilitate members and also government officials to, um, retrieve the relevant questions and answers. And the number will also be cast on the screen. If time is not enough, if you have further supplementary questions, then you can, uh, ask the questions in writing or you can follow the method up at the meetings of the panels. May I, um, now open the floor to members? First, Mr. Xin Chong Kai. Uh, Chairman, have a question on CSP zero zero two. It's about, um, the interchange or exchange programs. I don't know whether my calculation is wrong. Now, it says that, um, there's a scheme that lasts for a year. Uh, uh, twenty eight, thirty three and thirty for the year, uh, two thousand, uh, eleven to thirteen. On average, expenditure is about ten thousand dollars each for a one-month training. Is my calculation is correct or is the training, uh, does, uh, did the training last for one month? They are MPS forty five or above, these officers are. Uh, that's not the way to do the calculation. There are different courses, some courses are long, some courses are short. Uh, the number basically reflects the overall expenditure rather than the expenditure per head. Now, it says that, um, the program lasts for a month. And that's from your estimate. Perhaps, uh, I ask me some, uh, to, um, speak on the details. As for the expenditure, it is for the, uh, Hong Kong Civil Servants who participate in an exchange program in the mainland. Um, the Hong Kong officers are paid by the Hong Kong Government and mainland officers are paid by mainland, um, authorities. Uh, twenty eight, thirty three and thirty are the overall numbers, including Hong Kong Civil Servants and mainland participants. My question is on unit cost. Is it so low? Uh, four hundred and forty thousand dollars for twenty eight people for a month? As explained, four hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand, or three hundred and sixty thousand, uh, paid, were paid by Hong Kong Government for Hong Kong Civil Servants receiving training in the mainland. If you take twenty eight as an example, in year twenty eleven, seven were Hong Kong officers. According to Mr. Xin, seven people spent about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Mainland, uh, Civil Servants came, uh, coming to Hong Kong might include, uh, incur some spending. But mainly, the expenditure is for Hong Kong Civil Servants going to the mainland. So the number doesn't reflect our direct expenditure. I think the answer, well, I did not criticize, uh, that it is misleading, but the unit cost is a hun, uh, ten thousand dollars per month, that's really, um, something abnormal. Mr. Wong Kong Hing up two questions. First, CSP oh one oh. This is about NCSC contract staff as at thirty of June last year. Twelve thousand nine hundred of them. Among them, according to the administration, three thousand three hundred and forty one had been in the same post for five years or more. Why they have been working in the same post for more than five years, um, cannot be, um, converted to permanent establishment? The number of new posts, new permanent posts have increased, but, uh, uh, though I welcome it, this is still an outstanding problem. Why the problem is not solved? Of the twelve thousand nine hundred, uh, non-Civil Service Contract Staff, with regard to the set of arrangement of profit and fund, would the administration take away this set of, or abolish that set of arrangement so that these non-Civil Servants on contract can have a better retirement? Another is CSP zero two four. And that is an annex. It is about, uh, the number of Civil Servants about to retire in this, um, uh, financial year. And the police, um, CSD, immigration, CNE and fire services, immigration, um, of, um, they account for a big proportion among the six thousand who are about to retire. As a housing department, L C S D, and they are about one thousand two hundred who are about to retire. So, uh, the, um, discipline forces have large number retirees. Those two departments who are related to people's living have large number retirees. How are you going to deal with the problem? Now, first, on the contract staff, it depends on the nature of the work. Our guideline for the department is, is the work, if the work is permanent, then the work, uh, should be filled by civil, uh, should be taken up by Civil Servants. It's not therefore related to, uh, how long the contract staff is in the post. If the contract staff is in a post for a very long time and if they want to, uh, join the Civil Service, they can participate in the open recruitment exercises. And according to our experience, um, they may have, um, according to, uh, they may have better experience than other competitors. As for offsetting of profit and fund, the, um, L W B and the F S T B have looked into that. Um, the, um, administration, uh, the government being an employer can only respond accordingly. As for the retirement situation, we are of course concerned about it. And we are now considering, uh, how to, uh, we, we are conducting a study on lengthening the working life. And we also have recruitment exercises. If somebody retires, then the department has to ensure that there is adequate bodies, there are adequate bodies to fill the post. And there are more than three thousand, uh, contract staff who have been serving in the same post for five years. There is a need, they have experience. Why don't you convert these posts into permanent posts? Time is up. Please try to answer that quickly. It depends on the actual situation. Some work may not be suitable, uh, for, uh, to be done by Civil Servants. Um, sometimes the working hours may not, um, match up to those required by Civil Servants.
Next, Tang Kapiu. Thank you. CSP zero zero three is about the five-day week and its implementation. Well, this is nothing new and the community is continuing to monitor that. But then what we can do is limited because, uh, about seven point five percent of, uh, Civil Servants are able to enjoy this. This is as at, uh, September thirtieth, uh, twenty twelve. So it set the latest figure and also according to some frontline Civil Servants, in particular, Mod One Council members and also the Discipline Services, uh, members, they think that this is just, um, a pipe dream. It can never be implemented. So is that the case? So, um, let's say seventy percent of the, uh, total number of Civil Servants are already on five-day week. So for people on Mod One, how many of them are able to enjoy this five-day week arrangement? And also within the Civil Services or, or Discipline Services, how many of them are able to enjoy five-day week? So do you have a target date as to when you can achieve a hundred percent five-day week? And then CSP zero two five is also, uh, related to what Mr. Wong was asking just now. It's about the offsetting finger, figure with regard to, uh, M P F, um, contribution. Under zero two five, right, you can see that indeed there has been some improvement, uh, that fourteen thousand eight hundred contract staff. And then by twenty, uh, by twenty, uh, thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand. So some people have actually left. So in twenty twelve, uh, for people who, for NCSC who have left, did they apply for, uh, severance payment and also, uh, long service payment? And also, um, under the M P F contribution? Well, how much had been, um, plowed back to the CSP or the Treasury? Well, there are two points with regard to the five-day week issue. Our target is, uh, as far as possible, we should extend it. And of course, there are several conditions. Number one, no additional resources. Number two, no additional manpower. And therefore, we can only roll that out gradually from department to department. All along, some departments have been increasing the number of, uh, staff working on five-day week. And of course, as, uh, at present, it's only about seventy percent. And once every two years, we do conduct reviews to review the latest position. And Mr. Tang was reviewed, was referring to the figure two years ago. And this year, we are going to conduct another round of review. That is, uh, to be done later this year. So, uh, we will be able to provide you with an update later this year. But then as far as our target is concerned, we'd like to promote this as far as possible. But then basically, we also have to meet the overall objective. That is, um, the conditions on implementing this is that we must not increase resources and also manpower. So, um, to what extent are you able to increase the percentage? I don't have the figures, uh, with me. I can provide a figure out after the meeting. And second is about a long service payment. I'll defer to Mr. Chen. Chairman, concerning long service payment and also severance payment and their figures. Well, for NCSC staff, if they leave government, then the department will be responsible for making the payment to them on an individual basis. And the CSP does not have the relevant figures with us. So I'd like to know this. All right, um, he is pleased, uh, because he'll be able to get the L S P or the severance payment. But then actually, he's taking that out of his own account. Well, he might not, or might be aware of that. But then with regard to the trustee, um, paying the, making the contribution, will that go into your head or, or your account or the CSP's account? Mr. Chen, Chairman. For the details, we'll have to go back and check. As to what or not, it will go back to the government's, uh, uh, general account. Next, um, Mr. Tam Yu Chong. Um, CSP zero zero nine. Well, in the administration's reply, the administration said that it's expected that, well, in twenty fourteen fifteen, around six thousand one hundred Civil Servants will be retiring. So I'd like to know, when compared to the past, uh, it's set on the high side? And also, uh, is the trend going to be an upward one? And also, according to the administration's reply, um, it then went on to say that, uh, it is now going to assess the manpower and retirement situation in the Civil Service in the coming years and to look at possible options for extending the service of Civil Servants, taking into account the unique features and circumstances of the Civil Service system. And, uh, they plan to come back to us in the second quarter of, um, twenty fourteen to consult the staff size and also other relevant stakeholders. So what I'd like to know is, all right, in the second quarter of this year, you'll be consulting the staff side. So do you have anything in mind as to when this will be implemented? Because when you consult the staff side, in the end, you still intend to implement it, right? So it's not that, uh, you're going to just consult them without any plan to implement them. So do you have any timetable? If everything goes smoothly, when will you be able to implement this? And also, for people who will be retiring shortly, well, if you're not able to extend their service, then can they be hired on contract basis so that they can continue with the service? Or is it that before the implementation of the plan, you say, sorry, uh, you can't make it this time and, um, uh, too bad? Or do you have any, uh, will you be flexible enough in considering their cases? I've also heard some Civil Service representatives emphasizing that, well, with the extension of their service, um, it should not be up to the administration to, uh, choose who would be eligible. It should be up to the Civil Servants themselves to decide if they want to extend. So on this, uh, does the CSP have any, uh, response? Chairman, there are a few points going back to the issue of retirement. We expect that, uh, from now to twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen eighteen, about six thousand Civil Servants will be retiring every year. And that will go up to, say, twenty twenty two, twenty three, uh, within that five year, that will increase to about seven thousand. We expect that, uh, by twenty twenty seven, twenty eight, during the five-year period, starting from that year, it will come back down again because during, uh, these few years, we have hired more people. So in simple terms, uh, there is a rising trend within the next few years. And then after twenty twenty, uh, that will come back down. Just now, you talk about a study. We have just completed it. We hope to be able to consult the staff side in the second quarter as soon as possible. We will also be going to the relevant panel of this council to brief you. With regard to the details as to when, uh, the plan will be implemented, it depends on the outcome of the consultation. All right. For the second part of my question, for people who will be retiring soon, but then, uh, they may not be able to, um, make it. As far as your extension program is concerned, will they be hired on contract basis so that they can continue with their service? Well, at present, we do have such arrangements in place. For example, for the C N E department, because of the infant formula, uh, powder ban, uh, some people have been, uh, recruited or hired, uh, on a contract base, on contract basis. Yes, Mr. Pun Si Ping. CSP zero one zero is about NCSC converting to permanent Civil Service establishment. And according to the reply, one thousand two hundred, uh, twelve thousand nine hundred. And then in twenty fourteen fifteen, in the estimates, the departments will be increasing the number by two thousand five hundred and fifty six. So in terms of the new establishment, some six hundred and seventy posts would be for replacing NCSC positions. So I'd like to know this. Out of the six hundred and seventy posts to replace NCSC positions, how many of them have been with the administration for more than five years? And also out of the six hundred and seventy posts, uh, what types of posts are they? That's point number one. Number two, CSP zero two four. In fact, I've asked this before. In twenty fourteen fifteen, uh, how many Civil Servants will be retiring? And in your, uh, reply, you said that about six thousand seven hundred and twenty will be retiring. And, uh, five departments, uh, um, hardest hit, uh, Fire Services Department, three hundred and six eighty six, uh, F E H D, six hundred and fifty four, and then Police, seven hundred and twelve, and then Housing Departments, three hundred and twenty four, L C S D, two hundred and eighty four. So my question is, well, for the five, uh, hardest-hit departments, it shows that, uh, the wastage rate is most serious and, uh, there might be some succession problems. So with regard to these posts, how are you going to deal with them? How are you going to resolve the problem of, um, experienced Civil Servants retiring? And with regard to the extension of their service, what will these departments, uh, go first, uh, in implementing the plan? With regard to the re, the issue of retirement, I'll try to answer the question. For the six hundred and seventy posts, uh, I'll ask Mr. Chen to give you the details. Well, basically, for these departments, yes, they are hardest hit. And, uh, these departments also have the largest establishment, F E H D, Police and also Housing Department. They are larger departments. Naturally, they will also have more people retiring. And it's also the natural wastage. In simple terms, the department is aware of when these Civil Servants will be retiring. And therefore, they do have the responsibility to recruit more people over the past few years in order to ensure that there would be normal, uh, replacement and succession plan, uh, to fill up those posts vacated, uh, by the retiring officers. And we have also had regular meetings with them to ensure that there would be normal succession. And under the current system, in certain situations, if there is a need for us to, uh, keep the, um, uh, incumbent staff for longer in order to ensure that, uh, there would be proper replacement and succession, the department does have the power to, um, raise that with us for ex, for, uh, exceptional consideration. How about those, uh, who have stayed on for five years and so on? For the six hundred and seventy, uh, NCSC posts, uh, being converted to permanent posts? Well, these posts would, um, include, uh, different job types, including some clerical support posts. Some would be technical staff. Well, when departments review, whether or not, uh, there is a long-term need for such posts, they mainly look at the actual operational need of the post. And there is reason for us to believe that, uh, quite a number of these posts, out of the six hundred and seventy that we are talking, have been there for more than five years. And out of them, quite a large number of them. Sorry, um, you will have to provide the figures later. Mr. Gary Fan. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CSP zero zero six. It's about, uh, Civil Servants, uh, taking part in national studies, uh, program. And the administration said that because of the large numbers involved, uh, they have not been able to provide us with the detailed breakdown of the, um, officers, uh, by their grades and so on. So I'd like to simplify the question. Well, for every year, for Civil Servants, uh, participating in the national study programs, well, out of the twelve, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred, how many of them are, are directorate officers? And also, there are over a hundred such programs and activities every year. How many of them are about exchanges, um, or sponsor visits, uh, to Hong Kong or the mainland with regard to their constitutional, uh, system? Yes, Miss Sun. Bureau Director. Well, I don't have the breakdown with me. I'll provide the figures later after the meeting. So, uh, you don't have figures for either questions, right? I've asked two questions. So about, um, how many do, uh, directorate officers taking part in such national studies programs? Well, we do have the figures, but then, uh, if you need the breakdown with regard to directorate officers, I'll have to go back and check. And about, um, uh, programs on the constitutional, uh, setup of, uh, either place, do you have the breakdown? Well, most of these programs would be about, uh, different developments on the mainland. They would not be just about a particular subject. And of course, understanding the overall development in our motherland, uh, including, uh, political, economic and everything. Well, uh, that's true, but then we would not just be focusing on one aspect. So that's the, that's a comprehensive study. But then you talk about, uh, city planning, public housing, um, environmental protection, uh, tourism development promotion, trade commerce, information technology, public housing, uh, health and food safety and so on. So I'd just like to know how many of them or how much of them, how much of that is about, uh, uh, political development? Well, I'll try to answer the question. Just now, Mr. Fan, you were referring to our exchanges, uh, with our counterparts on the mainland. And, uh, those are the areas that we have touched on. But then we do not specifically arrange for Civil Servants to go to the mainland to exchange with them on political development. So we don't have, um, a specific, uh, uh, program on constitutional development. Next, um, Deputy Chairman Emily Lau. Yes, I'd like to ask about CSP zero zero seven. It's about archive management and destruction. Well, in the reply, well, there are two types of, um, uh, records. One would be administrative and the other would be, um, information. So some started in nineteen sixty four and all the way up to twenty fourteen. So, uh, some twenty thousand records have been destroyed and confidential would account to, uh, would, uh, would amount to about three thousand. And for, uh, archives or records, uh, that have been, uh, transferred for, uh, keeping a hundred and ten plus. And, uh, only nine hundred plus, uh, would be, uh, pending, uh, archiving and, uh, And only two were confidential. So I don't know what hap, why this has been the case. So almost all of them have been destroyed. So why on earth are you destroying all the records? In particular, when it comes to civil service, we're talking about a very long history and they are very much part of our history. You're talking about who should be promoted and so on. So how come majority of the records have been destroyed? So how can you be accountable to Hong Kong as a whole and also to our history? Bureau Director, does the destruction affect the deployment of resources? Chairman? Well, for records that are being destroyed, we have consulted our archive office. And only when the archive office says that it's okay to destroy them, that we will destroy them. So for old records, we will have to be very careful and we will have to check them before a decision is taken on whether they should be kept. And if there is no value in keeping them, of course, they will be destroyed. So before we destroy anything, we always consult them. And for the records being destroyed, most of them are related to complaint cases and also punishment or disciplinary cases. So most of them have already completed the procedure. That's why they are being destroyed. So what records will be kept? So most of them would have to do with our policy. Well, I think they are just saying this. Do you trust them? So I hope that you can come up with an archive law as soon as possible so that we can follow the rules and procedures in going about this. And you said that some records will be destroyed. But then, as we can see, most of the records have been destroyed. So as many people have said, these are part of our history and therefore they should be kept properly so that in due course, they can be opened up for people to have access to them. But then you're trying to destroy them as soon as possible. I think this is really problematic. So Bureau Director, can you go back and come up with a checklist as to what has been destroyed so that everybody will be able to comment on it? And then we'll be able to see whether those records should have been destroyed in the first place? Well, we may not have such information available. But in simple terms, we have consulted the government record service.
The GRS is not the highest authority. There are many professionals outside who are complaining. You just use the, you just hide behind the GRS and you destroyed most of the records. Not just your bureau, but many government departments are doing this. That is really unacceptable. The Permanent Secretary. As a government department, we have to comply with the guidelines issued by the government. The handling of records, the responsibility of the GRS and the guidelines by GRS to be complied with by government departments and we work according to that. Before we destroy the records, we have to submit our proposal to the GRS and get their approval. If that's the case, why can't you give us a list? Can you provide a list of the meeting? Is there a list? You can provide this. We'll go back and check. Okay, please go back and check. Next, Ms. N. Chang. Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions. First, CSP 003. About 29.5% of civil servants don't have five working day week or five-day week. And the bureau is studying the matter. When will the study be completed? And will there be more and more civil servants enjoying a five-day week? The second question is CSP 041. I want to know the following. There is a certain number of civil servants who are qualified to, who are pensionable. I just want the administration to tell me whether there is a number. How many of them are eligible to pensions? And what is the peak payment for pensions? Now, when is the peak for paying pensions? And in terms of retirement policy, is there any? I have come into contact with many retired civil servants. These civil servants are treasures of society. Now, they have retired, they go out visiting many places in the world. Will you consider allowing retired civil servants to continue to serve the public? Three questions. Concerning the five-day week, we keep working on this and we do not set a deadline. We have to consider the actual situation. We already explained that there are several conditions for implementing five-day week. We will keep working with the departments concerned. We keep promoting this and some departments allowing some of their staff members to enjoy five-day week. As for the retirement situation, or pension situation rather, the majority of civil servants are pensionable, about 110,000 of them. As for financial implications, maybe the Secretary for Treasury can explain that. As for the retirees, the present, under the present retirement mechanism, retirees can be engaged by some government departments to do some short-term tasks. After colleagues have retired, we also encourage them to serve the community, even if they are not working within the government. Maybe the Secretary for Treasury can speak on this. Concerning pensions, there are civil servants retiring. In the next five years, the number will increase to about 7,000 per year. In our long-term financial planning, we have done a rough estimate. We expect that with regard to financial implication, from 2014-15, $26.9 billion to 32, 33, or 50, about $50.9 billion in 2032, 2033. Next, Ms. Claudia Mo. Sorry, speaker is not coming through. CSP 007, the answer is problematic concerning dealing with government records. You say it's confidential, then it's confidential. You say it's destroyed, then it's destroyed. They are, the records approved for destruction by GRS. If they are destroyed, then they no longer exist. So what do you mean by that? The NOCs, the records have been destructed after approved by GRS and are therefore not required to be transferred to GRS. I don't understand the question. Do you have a list of the records destroyed? I've already answered the question. What is it? What is your answer? They go back and look. They don't have a list. We don't have the information. We will have to check whether we have such information. CSP 002. Concerning studies in the mainland, exchanges in the mainland. Now, you use the term exchange. But what I heard from the reply from the Director of Bureau is about attending courses. You mentioned environmental protection, drainage. But what about the police? Why the police have to go there to attend courses? What kind of courses are they? The Permanent Secretary. I think there are two points here. Concerning exchange mentioned in the reply, we have exchanged, we have exchanged arrangements and visit arrangements with the mainland authorities. We're talking about this. I think the Director of Bureau was commenting on training courses. And from time to time, we do send colleagues to attend training courses in the mainland. They don't go there to exchange with other departments in the mainland. Say, for example, people go to, our colleagues go to Tsinghua and Beijing University. My question is the same. Say, Hong Kong police going to Hangzhou to conduct exchange, what kind of exchange is this? Is it just a once, a one-off exercise? I don't have the details. As for police officers, in terms of policing, in terms of law and order, may need to conduct exchange with the mainland. CSP 023. About Chinese-English. It's about serving the public. Concerning translators, attached different departments, 330 of them. As for amount of expenses, you say it's by internal resources. Is the usage rate satisfactory? Now, you say that according to demand, the service has been provided. I think you don't address the question. Concerning those who don't understand Chinese, who applies for public housing, let's don't talk about the languages of the ethnic minorities, which cannot be provided, not even English interpretation, translation is provided. So will you give the undertaking? There will be a more detailed reply with breakdowns. Can that be possible? Is there any? Now, concerning service at the frontline, then the departments concerned have the duty to provide the translation service. Under the Home Affairs Department, there are several centers helping ethnic minorities to provide service. As for the CSP, we provide the guidelines. Okay, then issue the guidelines. Next, Mr. Lee Chau Yan. Thank you, Chairman. My question is in relation to CSP 024, that is NXT. You can see how the government is exploiting the non-civil NCSC contract staff. More than five years. Total number of NCSC contract staff, 14,000 odd. More than five, more than 30% have worked for five years and more than 10% have worked for more than 10 years. Altogether, 1,693. The following three departments rank first, the Post Office, LCSD is the second, 602 for the Post, and LCSD 327, EMSD 271. Three departments come first. The first three, in fact, they are the first three. They've worked under contract for more than 10 years. How many 10 years do one, does one's life have? If one's working life is 30 years, then they have lost one-third of their working life on this contract arrangement. And you still want them to be NCSC staff for how long? My question is, we have asked you many times to review your NCSC policy. I know your official answer. You've said it many times before. Now, you say EMSD and the Post Office, trading funds. As for other departments, we have to consider whether there are long-term needs or there are services under review. If there are services under review, then we have to wait for the completion of review. If there is no long-term need, then the staff members cannot be converted to permanent service. But 10 years, isn't it a permanent need or long-term need? Just want to ask. How soon will you convert these NCSC staff into civil servants? Let me answer the question. In fact, Mr. Lee has already said a lot. There are two points here. If their work cannot be replaced by civil servants. Another thing is that even if they work for the long term, they do not work up to the civil service working hours. They are just part-time. Chairman? He has not answered my question, Mr. Chairman. He just assumed that I were the Policy Secretary and I had answered the question. He refused to answer this. As for the employees who have worked for more than 10 years on contract, does he think there is a need to review the policy so that these long-term casual workers can be given a permanent job? Do you have the sincerity to remove this outrageous arrangement? You force people to work as a casual worker for over 10 years. Do you have the sincerity to review that? Just a quick answer, policies? That if the job is long-term, is done by civil, is to be done by civil servants, it will be converted into a civil service post? If that's the case, why these three departments do not have the conversion of permanent staff? 327 LCSD, the Post, 800, and EMSD 200 odd. Next, Mr. Yu Siwing.
CSP 041. And my question is that over the past few years, with regard to pension payment, on average, is about 10%. And in 2013-14, when compared to 2012-13, there would be an increase by about 9.5%. But starting from 2014-15, when compared to 2013-14, all of a sudden, it went up by some 14.6%. So the increase when compared to the past three years was a lot steeper. So I'd like to know, how come, starting from next year, there will be such a sharp rise? And have you done any estimate as to the next three to five years with regard to the relevant expenses? To what extent? Would it go further up? And I'd like to know if you're able to keep it at the past three years expenses at about 10% of the total government expenditure? Because if it just goes up all the time, then that could become quite a burden on the administration. I'll defer to Mr. Seal for further details. But then, basically, we have to look at the estimated number of colleagues retiring. So this is an actual figure. And concerning retiring civil servants, we do have a commitment. And therefore, with regard to the financial forecast, we have to meet that. And the only thing that we can do is to make an estimate on the number of civil servants retiring. Yes? Well, we have to look at it from two aspects. Out of the $26 billion plus, well, about $11 billion would be for civil servants who have retired in 2013-14 or those who start to retire in 2014-15, they'll get the monthly pension. And then $11.2 billion would be for new retirees. And they would also get the one-off lump sum payment. So for the next three years, what's the forecast? Because I was asking, how come it just jumped up so sharply all of a sudden? Because during the past three years, it went up steadily by about 10%. How come in the next year or so, how come there would be this sudden rise? How can you justify that? Well, as the Director of Accounting Services just explained, we are looking at the age profile of our colleagues and we have to make the projection on that basis. Because by a certain age, our colleagues will have to retire. As to when they actually retire, that depends on when they were recruited to join the civil service in the first place. And that took place several decades ago. And in the next few years, the reason why there are more people retiring, that's because in the 80s, during a particular period of time, the civil service expanded very substantially. That's why these colleagues are retiring shortly. So in the next few years, you may be talking about an increase by 14, 15% every year. Is that the case? Well, if you look at the percentage vis-à-vis government general expenditure, that's difficult to tell. But then, the only thing that I can say is, as far as we are concerned now, for colleagues retiring in the next few years, there is an upward trend. And just now, you also said that by 2030, so there will be a rather steep increase every year. You just gave us a figure, a figure that you gave to Ms. N. Chang. That is by 2032, right? So you did have a figure, right? So what's the figure? So on what basis? So on what basis have you projected that figure? What's the rate of increase every year? Can you give us further detail? Well, just now, we base that on a number of assumptions. For example, every year, about three percent pay rise every year. And also, they would have worked for a longer period of time before they retire. So that's the projection that we have made on that basis. All right, we have some time left and I'll give that to the second round. Two minutes each. Ms. Sin Chung Kai. Chairman on Training. You've only run one program, Staff Exchange Program with the mainland. And yes, that might be good, but then it doesn't necessarily mean that there is a lot of experience for Hong Kong civil servants to learn from. Are there any other exchange programs with places other than the mainland? That's point number one. And number two, even if we can have exchange programs with the mainland, I understand that some of that, some of those will take place in Shanghai or Hangzhou and then they'll take you to a number of places to pay a visit. But then, what substantially can you learn from them? For example, if we have relevant benefit program and then they will go and take a look as to how they run their own programs, like civil service benefits and so on. So I'd like to know more about these programs. So is it that a department would initiate that? And then they'll tell their counterparts on the mainland as to what they'd like to see? Or is it that the mainland counterparts would just organize a program and then you just go and attend those programs? Which way is true? Yes, Permanent Secretary? To answer the first question, for such exchange programs, well, that's organized by the CSTDI and is centrally organized and coordinated. It's part of the national studies programs. And different departments would look at their own business needs. I think colleagues have been conducting visits overseas and they've exchanged with their overseas counterparts. They've been doing that on a regular basis, but that is not coordinated by the CSTDI. And then, when it comes to how such exchange programs are organized, well, every year, we'd look at the places that we'd like to visit and then we'll see if our counterparts there would be interested in certain areas. And then we'll see which areas our department would be interested in as far as their setup is concerned. So we'll just play the role of an intermediary in coordinating this. All right? We only have six or seven minutes left and two members have just joined us. They'll be asking in the first, they'll be asking for the first time. First, Kwai Keng and then Ip Khoi Kim, three minutes each. All right, can I start now? Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to refer to CSP 016. Initially, I'd like to know more about NCSC staff working overtime. And then the department said that it did not have the figures. It did not have the figures. So I'd just like to know whether or not there has been abuse of NCSC staff? Because that's very important, because they have no safeguards whatsoever. And as a result, if they want to make more money, they will have to blindly work overtime. I think the departments will have to provide us with the figures. Because at other levels, we have been taking this up with different departments. I've also reflected this to the Bureau Director. Nothing has come about and you don't even have the figures. I think this is totally unacceptable. You are turning a blind eye to this. So I hope that you can provide us with the figures with regard to NCSC staff working overtime. Next, in the last paragraph, you said that for NCSC staff, the remuneration is offered in an all-inclusive pay package. I find it objectionable because, well, they are not paid particularly high. And therefore, if you say that it's all-inclusive, then they are not eligible for promotion, medical and healthcare benefit and so on. So there is no such benefit at all. And therefore, when you refer to all-inclusive pay package, actually, nothing is included except the pay. So if you say that it's all-inclusive, then in the coming months and years, how are you going to adjust their pay in order to ensure that in the past, they are not eligible for promotion, healthcare and dental services? How can these be reflected in their pay package? Well, in simple terms, Chairman, for NCSC staff, their terms, there's terms and conditions of service should not be compared to those of their civil service counterparts. And therefore, their pay will be determined by the market rate. And therefore, we will have to be sufficiently attractive before we can attract and retain people. So that's what we mean by all-inclusive. So we will leave the flexibility to the departments so that they can manage this within their departments. Next, Ip Khoi Kim. Three minutes. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on 011. It's about the patron survey. Well, Mrs. Regina Ip asked this. And at present, the staff side, have they returned to the negotiating table? What's the progress that has been made so far? Is that likely? And if they still refuse to go back to the negotiating table, then what is your strategy? Next, concerning civil servants. Well, with regard to their pay adjustment mechanism? For the discipline services and their civil servants, in terms of their terms and conditions of service, in particular, on working hours, will that be dealt with differently? Well, for people within the discipline services, they are working different number of hours every week. So do you have these specific details? Well, there were two points. First, on the PTSC, they have already started their work with regard to this year's patron survey. And of course, as far as the committee is concerned, there are individual colleagues who have refused to take part. We will continue to invite them to join and we hope that they will join. But then, basically, there has been progress made by the committee. And the findings of the patron survey will be looked at by the CEO in council in determining this year's pay adjustment. That's a very important consideration. Next, about working hours. The administration does not have, and across the board, working hours applicable to all civil servants. And it depends on the nature of work. And even within the discipline services, they also work different hours. And for the clerical grades, they also have different working hours. So we will leave that to the department to decide. And then for colleagues, say, the fire services and also for the ambulance colleagues, if they want to have an adjustment and if that require extra resources, how would that be dealt with? Well, we have the three noes policy. No additional resources, no additional manpower and no service should be affected. So under the three prerequisites, the departments concerned can consider this. And you also refer to the FSD. And they are now looking at reducing the working hours to fifty-one per week. And that's done on the basis of the three noes policy. Next, one minute, Tan Kapiu, asking in the second round. Tan Kapiu?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, on NCSC. Under CSP, sorry? 025, once again. It's about the changes in the NCSC staff. According to the information that you provided to the panel, about one-third of NCSC staff, about four thousand, five thousand of them, do not enjoy gratuity upon completion of contract. So will you consider offering NCSC end of contract at gratuity? So that when there is offsetting arrangement, their retirement life will not be adversely affected? And if that is done, then what are the implications?
Well, we do not plan to do that because the offsetting arrangement will have to be dealt with as a whole and we'll leave that to the individual departments. And if they believe that only if they offer end of contract gratuity, will they be able to recruit sufficient number of people? Then, of course, they'll have to do it. And then, if there is no such need, then they will not be offering this. So will you be doing this? Will you be conducting a study so that when the entire administration decides that the administration will give priority to this? In other words, you'll be prepared to offer all NCSC staff end of contract gratuity? So will you be making plans for that? So that when the chief executive said that, all right, we'll be offering this? So when, will you be ready then? So will you be making preparation for that? My answer is that we will be leaving that to the departments. Okay, that's the end of our session. And then the next session will start at three-twenty-five. All right, thanks again.